We don't draw the crowd like Chris does.
I know.
We're not popular, no.
Hello?
Hola.
Hola. What is it outside, 73, 74, something like that? And we're in here. We should be doing this outside. Although the sun's not there either. So at that dinner last night, and I had a little conversation with a lady at the table next to me. I kind of joked a little bit. She said, you know, you ought to start your town hall off with a little joke. I said, okay. I said, do you like good, clean jokes or dirty jokes? She said, the dirtier, the better. So, in light of that, I was talking to my 12, 14-year-old grandson this morning, and he was trying coffee for the first time. He said, it tastes like dirt. I said, well, it was just brown this morning. That's the best I can do for a dirty joke. I'm glad you came today. It's a great opportunity to catch up with some information. As we did last month, I have all of our directors here today too, to give you an update on their departments, and what's happening around campus. Today is our first day of our mock survey for Medicare certification. So I know we have Tamika here. We may not have Adrienne here. She may be busy working with the surveyors over there today too. But that's an exciting part of something happening now on campus. I want to take a couple of minutes to recognize some of our team members. We had our team member appreciation day yesterday, and we took the time at that meeting to recognize several of our team members for things that they had done around campus. So I'm going to run real quick kind of through the names and what they were recognized for, and invite you to, when you see them around campus, to thank them and congratulate them for receiving the award, and thank them for what they do for us every day too. Everybody knows Ann Hopper, I'm sure. She's recognized for stewardship for the Peak Award. Mariah Robinson, recognized for quality in the Peak Award. Trish Breck and Carter for culture in our Peak Award. Tanika Sellers for hospitality. And Karen Tate for hospitality. So again, if you see these folks around campus, take the opportunity to thank them and congratulate them on receiving this for the sport each month. And you also have the opportunity each month to recognize team members as well. There are forms you can fill out and turn those into Human Resources Resources, or one of the directors here will get it to HR to be reviewed each month too. Is that my ears ringing, or is somebody... Let's jump into some department updates with our directors who we have here today. David Stewart.
Yep.
I have some exciting news, I think, to share for you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm David Stewart, representing Dining Services. So a little bit of things you already know. People often ask me how operations are going in dining, and I kind of had a little aha moment this morning that, while COVID will probably be with us long-term, civil staffing issues, and so we gain people, we lose people, and I think it's just going to be the way it is for the rest of the time I'm working. But we're doing very, very well in dining. We really are. We've got great people. And so we are going to work towards reopening Prima. But let me explain how that's going to work. The Dining, Your Residence Dining Services Committee, along with the leadership team in dining, have been talking over the last three or four months on how we might do this so we don't have to turn around and close it again if something horrific happens. So we are going to reopen Prima in March. Hopefully, in a couple of weeks from now. I wasn't able to say the date yet. Let's see how quickly we can get this ready. What we're going to do, you already know we're using the space. We're seating in there. So what we're going to do on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, just to start out with, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, is we'll offer a couple of Prima-specific specials for those days. And then we'll do the table settings with the lamps and all that, as we have in the past. A little bit of the old Prima. But in the old days, what we did is we had two separate kitchens. And I'm frightened to try to open two separate kitchens again. So we think that trying to do all of this out of one kitchen might be a better idea. And we won't find that if we get hit with COVID very strongly in the Dining Services Department, or maybe a couple of people get an opportunity to move elsewhere, and they do, that we won't have to... We don't want to shut Prima down again. So we think this is going to be a good plan. So in the next couple of weeks, look for an announcement of when we're going to reopen the Prima space, and we'll see how it goes. And we certainly welcome your feedback. We are also working to get our next household area ready to go. And that's the old space on the fourth floor. That used to be simply what we called healthcare. And so there's a rehab neighborhood going in there. And we are working to get that new renovated pantry ready to go. So things are moving along very well. And with respect to, again, I'm going to close with, with respect to the rest of the world, we're doing very, very well with staffing. I personally know four people who have their restaurants up for sale. They just don't want to do it anymore. They're tired of finding out on Friday night that they only have half the staff they need. So they're selling their restaurants. So we're doing pretty well, folks, and we have some good team members. I get good comments about the personalities and how hard they work. So I'm very grateful to you, and I'm very grateful to our team. So, good news. Have a good day.
Don't run away. Don't run away. Would you explain a little bit about the Four Seasons Table and how that stood work?
Sure. Yep. So the Four Seasons Table is something we were asked to do. We, it is an opportunity for individuals, whether they be new residents who don't know the lay of the land, or maybe somebody who's reticent to come to the dining room alone for different reasons. It's a table that we have set aside at a certain time each night. Residents can call up and say, well, I don't really know too many people here, or whatever the circumstance may be. And they will be invited to join the Four Seasons Table. And one of the things I think we're going to try to do through the Dining Committee and through some of the other committees is get some residents who already live here to come and join that table at night. So we don't have just a sparse one or two people at that table. We've tried this a number of times over our years here. It's had mixed success, but we were asked to try it again, and we are. And we're going to make a good go of it. So Your Residence Dining Services Committee brought it up this week when we met on Wednesday. And we're going to try a couple of different iterations of it, and hopefully have it be a lively spot, or livelier spot, in the main dining room. That said, I think some of you who maybe visit the cafe, see that that long table over in the corner is actually quite a popular table. It has on its own become a bit of a hospitality Four Seasons Table, where you just show up and join others. And so that's kind of what we'd like to see this table in the main dining room become. But we'll keep plugging away and see if we can have it get some legs under it.
Thanks, David. Again, a great opportunity to meet your neighbors. Welcome somebody who just moved in down the hall to come join you for dinner and get to know some more people themselves. I think those of you who have lived here for a while know that the more people you know, the more fun it is, the more comfortable you feel. So let's help the new folks be comfortable, as well as some of us or some of you who may not have a partner, but are just looking to join a group of people that have a nice dinner. So let's take the opportunity to do that. David Taylor, let's pay the bills.
Good afternoon. I'm David Taylor from the business office. It's tax season. Tax letters went out over two weeks ago. We've gotten very few calls. So if you haven't received yours, please give us a call. We'll resend it. If you're unsure about your contract type, give us a call. We'll look it up and tell you that. If you or your tax advisor have questions about the letter specifically, Kevin Sellminen, our CFO, has put his phone number in the tax letters, and you or your tax advisor can call him for more specific tax information. Other than that, the business area, in the residence business area over here, we put a new shredder in it. It's a little bit smaller than the old one, 20 gallons versus 32 gallons, but it seems to be working fine. Shredding seems to be an issue during tax season, but I think we're good. And if anybody has any questions, please call myself or Sissy in the business office. I'm 8805, and she is 8804.
Thanks, David. Thanks, David. Appreciate it. See, Sharon's not here today. Take care of business. Okay. Stephanie.
Hello, everyone. I'm Stephanie Merkin. I'm the Human Resources Director at Cedarfield. I work in human resources, so just kind of want to remind you that we're doing weekly orientations to hire team members, get them in for the departments. We all just completed our car accreditation, which I know a lot of you are familiar with. For the month of January, we hired 25 new team members. So we were really busy during the month of January. We hired two full-time CNAs, two PRN CNAs, one full-time LPN, 14 PRN LPNs, one part-time RN supervisor, one Director of Sales and Marketing, one household housekeeper, and then one household cook. For the month of February, as of today, we have hired 17 new team members. So again, we've been really busy this month getting staff on board. We have hired two full-time CNAs, three part-time CNAs, three full-time LPNs, two part-time LPNs, one household cook, one household kitchen assistant, one neighborhood housekeeper, two custodians, one sous chef, and one part-time server. Our current openings, we have seven full-time openings, which is a huge improvement. At one point, we had a total of 35 openings. So we have seven full-time openings right now, and then about nine part-time openings within all of the departments. So not too bad. We're looking much better. And then our turnover for the month of January was about 3.32%, so we're looking pretty good so far. Trying to get everybody on board. And that's about all I have. Questions?
That is amazing news. When I started, you know, the end of December, the first thing I heard from Stephanie and the rest of the team is, we need to get more staff. And so I think Stephanie and her team have done an amazing job of getting us up to almost 100% staffed. We'll never be 100%. There's always people coming and going. But to have only seven openings is just amazing. So thanks. Appreciate that. Lacey, looks like she's excited to talk.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Lacey. I'm Director of Maintenance. I brought my book just so I could read a couple of the notes I had. To go over just our January work orders, just to give you guys an idea, we talked about it last month, how many work orders the maintenance team is doing. We had 1,246 work orders in progress over the month of January, and the guys completed 1,034. So the guys are really working hard, so just to kind of give you an idea of what they're doing. And then I guess the visitors, as they come in, we want to let everybody know if you're having a visitor come in, security stopped me if they wanted to talk. We don't want anybody coming in that's unwanted, if you will. So we ask if you're having a visitor come on property, call the security, let the security know they're coming, or you can send them an email. Or if you let your visitor know what apartment you live in, where you live, because that's kind of the key. If they know your apartment number, they kind of understand, okay, maybe they are wanted in your own property. So just to let everybody know. And the last thing, really, Jeff mentioned it, we're in the middle of this Medicare certification. The guys, our next couple of weeks, are going to be really busy pushing to finish a lot of these Medicare items. So just bear with us over the next couple of weeks, you know, as far as getting work orders. And I'll hang out a little while. If I have any specific questions or something we didn't talk about, I'll hang out a little while after the meeting. We can answer questions directly.
One question. This has come up a couple of times. What about the blue dumpster?
So, yeah, I just, actually, just now I drove by. The dumpster needs to be emptied. We're going to try to keep the blue dumpster here for a little while longer, just to clean up all the electrical closets and mechanical rooms and boiler rooms, to clean out all that stuff up for the Medicare certification. So it's full now. It's actually overfull. If you look at it, it needs to be dumped. I thought it was going to be dumped a couple of days ago, but it hasn't been. And we're probably going to keep that here for a little while longer, just to get everything cleaned up for Medicare. And hopefully, once everything gets cleaned up, we can get it out of here for good.
Thank you. When I first came on board, well, Lacey gave me a great tour of the campus. And what happens on campus is what happens at my house. You get something, and you don't want to throw it away, so you put it someplace. So we look in a janitor's closet, and there's stuff. You look in a hallway that nobody uses, and there's more stuff. And you look in this other room, and then, oh, there's more stuff here too. So this is just a matter of, like we have to do once in a while in our own homes, it's just time to clean out the junk. And so it's taken a lot longer, I think, to be discovered, there's a lot more that we ever thought we had hidden around here. So thanks to your team, doing what you got to do. But the blue dumpster will disappear sometime, but it's going to be there for a little while longer. Florence.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Florence Brooks, Director of Lifestyles and Wellness. That's the Pastoral Services Team, the Independent Living Clinic, Pathways to Wellness Programs and Services, and the Transportation and Concierge Services. So I reached out to my team, and I said, what would you like to share with the residents? And the Wellness Team said to be sure and making sure you knew that February is Heart Health Month, and that movement matters, that there are clear indicators that many Cedarfield residents are making exercising a priority. If you're not aware, they create these weekly fitness at-a-glance calendars, listing the classes that are available to you. Those are in the Wellness Building, and we have classes for levels one, two, and three. So there's classes for people at all different levels. If you're not familiar with those, reach out to Carol and Asher. Just go into the Wellness Building and ask. There are several different locations in that building to pick up a calendar and find a class that you can plug into. From your Pathways to Wellness Team, they want to remind you that next week is Mardi Gras. And on February 21st, be on the lookout for the Mardi Gras Parade right here at Cedarfield. If you want to walk in it, there's details about that in Former. Or you can just open the door to your residents, and when they pass by, they'll fling some beads in the door. So you'll be in the mood. From the concierge desk, they want to remind you, whether you live in an apartment or a cottage, be sure you let the concierge desk know if you're going to be gone overnight. That way, if there's no movement detected in the apartment or cottage the next day, and they check the list, they can say, oh, they're gone to Spain. That's why they're not moving. Number two, if you're expecting guests, they called me while I was sitting there after Lacey announced. The gatehouse called and said, if you're expecting guests, it helps them come in quicker if they know where you live. So if you're in apartment 222, let them, make sure your guest knows that. Otherwise, what will happen is the gatehouse will have them pull around and wait while they confirm with you what the apartment number is and if you're expecting a guest. So the more your guests, because the gatehouse works on the assumption that if they don't know where you live, they don't really know that you. So just be sure your guests are informed to the best of possibility. And then I understand that beginning March the 7th, each week, we have a shuttle to area stores. And beginning March the 7th, we're going to add Publix to that weekly shopping shuttle per resident request. And finally, this question comes up to time to time, and that is, what if I go out to an emergency center or to the hospital after hours on the weekend, and I'm not admitted? How am I going to get back to Cedarfield? It's as simple as this. Just call Cedarfield. Call that number that you know, 474-8800. Depending on the time of day, either the concierge will answer, or the gatehouse will answer. And if you say, I'm Mary Poppins, and I'm at the health center, and I need a ride back to Cedarfield, they'll connect you with the nursing supervisor, who will then work with one of two vendors that we have a relationship with to pick you up. And that vendor arrangement is that they will bill Cedarfield, and then we'll reverse that charge to you in the next billing statement. The two vendors we work with for after-hours transportation are James Limo and Henrico Taxi. But just call 474-8800. The other day, when I came in to the gatehouse, I said, if I'm off-campus and I call Cedarfield, where's that phone going to ring after hours? And I said, it's going to ring right here. And I said, if I need a ride back to Cedarfield, what are you going to do? They said, we're going to connect you to the nursing supervisor. They're going to get you back here. And I went, wonderful. So test it out when you come to the gate. And I have a joke too. Okay? Did you hear about the man who cut off his left side? He's all right now.
That's a good one. I like that. Adrienne, is he stuck in the backpack there? Come on up. I know you probably just swam with everything going on over there, but might I give us a brief detail of what's happening? And it's exciting going on in your life. Tamika, you might be off the hook.
Good afternoon. I'm Adrian Oliver. I'm the Associate Executive Director. And sorry for my tardiness. And we're currently working on our Medicare, just in case you haven't heard. We're trying to get Medicare certified. And I have a mock survey team in the building, so you have to get what they need when they need it, so they can let the powers that be know that we are ready and willing. Today, a lot is going on. We have furniture being delivered, because the households and the residents are moving around. Assisted living moved down on Monday. Magnolia Meadow, which is part of the fourth-floor household, is moving on Tuesday from one side of the building to the other side of the building. Never go moment in healthcare. Don't even know what else. I'd probably do better with questions. Or is there anything that you want to know about healthcare that I can tell you today?
I do have staffing.
Staffing is awesome. Jeff asked about staffing. So we no longer use staffing agencies, thanks to my awesome nursing team. I don't know if Stephanie has spoke yet, but the HR team has done a wonderful job getting nurses and aides, and we are scared to even say it. I'd say 95% staffed with our own people, just as couple vacancies here and there. But it is great to know that everybody that's here to take care of the residents actually worked for Cedarfield, and they are part of the Cedarfield team, versus using people that just come in and fly by night. So I'm really excited about staffing, and I'm sure the nursing team is excited about it too.
Could you talk about occupancy levels in the different health areas?
Well, it changes. She asked about occupancy. The question was, could I talk about occupancy level in the different care areas? At the moment, Morning Glory, which is our member support, has 19 out of 20 residents. However, one of Cedarfield residents that are currently in IL is moving in next week or two. Assisted living is completely filled. When we transition to more rooms as construction continues, in case you haven't noticed, we're doing more and more construction. When they're done in July, we'll have more assisted living apartments. But as of today, all of our assisted living apartments are filled. As far as healthcare in and of itself, out of our safety beds, we currently have 54 residents and two admissions from the hospital, which are Cedarfield residents, are coming back today and tomorrow. So that leaves us four beds, in case something goes bump in the night and somebody loses a bed. Tonight, I have one. But please, don't do it just to come hang out. It's healthcare. Come walk through and say hello. I don't need anything to happen to you. Anything else? But I want to invite you guys to come over and walk through. I don't want something to happen, and you go to the hospital, and then come to healthcare, and be the first time you see healthcare. I'd like for you to walk through, talk to our residents, talk to our staff, look at the environment, just so that you're familiar with it. You're welcome anytime. So there's no limitation on when you can come, and when you can't come, just swing by. Tamika, Ross, and I, our office, we share a suite. And if we're not in there, she usually is not in there. But if I'm not in there, then I'm not walking around. But feel free to wander through healthcare. We'd like to see you.
When all the construction is done, will you be doing any kind of tours?
Definitely. The question was, when construction is finished, are we going to do any kind of tours? We're actually doing tours of the missed construction. So when we're done, we're going to have a huge open house, some kind of party. And, you know, if you feed them, they will come. So we will feed you, so you will come. And that way, it's okay there. David, look, really feed them? Yes, we'll have like an open house, you know, orders and drinks or something, just so you can see the environment and see the people. Any other questions? Well, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to talk. I'm going to go this way.
Thank you. As she mentioned, you know, feel free to walk through. But more importantly, if you walk through, you probably know somebody who lives over there. So take the opportunity to visit your friends who may have moved from independent living to assisted living or to healthcare. They would love to see you. I had lunch there yesterday in assisted living with four ladies, and they just love talking to people who are from the outside, so to speak. So they would love to hear from you and see you. So feel free to walk through. Have a visit with the friends that you may have not seen in a while, because they're over there looking to reconnect with you as well. Heather Scott just walked in, our Director of Marketing. Just in time. It's right up, her chance to come up and introduce herself. Yes. Heather is a recent addition to our team. She'll tell you a little bit about herself.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am glad to be here. As Jeff said, my name is Heather Scott. I am the new Director of Marketing here at Cedarfield. I started back on January 9th. And I've had a chance to meet some of you already. Thank you for the applause. I know I've got my work cut out for me here, and I've appreciated getting a chance to talk to many of you and getting your experience and kind of letting me know what you would like to see in the marketing department. Just, obviously, I've got a lot yet to learn, but I feel like I've gotten a really good start so far. We've got a great team in the marketing department. We are fully staffed now, which is exciting. And our focus right now is, excuse me, is really working well as a team, working on communication, both with the team here, the leadership team, with you as the residents, and all of the incoming prospects that we're meeting with. I've gotten some good feedback about some of the challenges that have sort of come over the marketing department over the last year. And one thing I really want to focus on is great customer service, and making sure that people feel taken care of, and we're getting back to them in a timely manner. We're getting them the right information, and want to really share the spirit of Cedarfield with anyone who's interested in coming to potentially live here. So my door is always open. I welcome the opportunity to meet as many of you as possible. Please come down and introduce yourself. I'll stick around after this town hall. If you have any questions, again, I'm all ears, and I'm just really, oh, here we go.
What was your previous job?
Oh, great. So most recently, I worked with Way4, which is the senior move management company. Some of you may have used Way4 yourselves. I was the Managing Director... I was the managing director for the Richmond office, so I ran the sales team here. And so that was actually how I became most familiar with Cedarfield. I spent some time here, I got to know some of the staff. And so when this position became available, it was something I, I pondered and thought about for a while, and I just always loved being here, and so that was what led me here. And then prior to that, I was the Director of Sales and Marketing for the Commonwealth Club downtown. So I had a nice long time there, I ran all of the private events there, I was the clubhouse manager, worked with the service staff there as well. So that was, that was a great experience. So that's been fun too, because I've been able to see some familiar faces that I crossed paths with over my time there. And it's, you know, we all know Richmond is a big, small town, so it's fun to be able to continue those relationships as well. I'm not a Richmond native, I am originally from Burnsville, Minnesota, which is a suburb outside of Minneapolis. I went to Marquette University in Milwaukee, so I would say you can take the girl out of the Midwest, but you can't take the Midwest out of the girl. I've also lived in Mobile, Alabama, for a few years after college, and then most recently, I lived in Chicago before I moved to Richmond almost twenty years ago. So I've, I've seen a lot of this country, but I call Richmond home now, I love it here, and I'd love to be a part of just another important part of this community.
In, in marketing nowadays, there's a lot of need to make sure we get our word out to the world. Any thoughts about what we should be doing as far as social networking, Facebook, Instagram, collaborating with people in the community? What's your thoughts going forward?
Well, I would sort of turn that around a little bit. Could I get a show of hands of who here has a Facebook account? Keep your hand up if you are an active user of Facebook, because there's a difference, you know, there's, some people just like to look, but some people participate. What about Instagram? Does anyone here have an Instagram account? Twitter? So that's, it's sort of varied, I mean, I, I do think it is more commonplace for people to get their information that way. I think it's important to have a presence versus maybe five or ten years ago where it was kind of on the sidelines. I also think those mediums can be really good for just showing how lively and engaged an organization can be versus putting something in print and then it going out of date, you know, the second it, it comes back from the printer. So that's something definitely to explore, but there's also the balance there of maybe not, you don't want to overshare too much as well too. So that's something we'll be taking a closer look at.
How many vacancies do we have?
Currently? So the, the occupancy right now is around ninety-six percent. We have a handful of some one bedrooms.
How many apartments are there?
Oh, so there are about four or five open apartments currently, and they are primarily one-bedroom apartments. We do have one cottage that is currently available, but we've been actually showing that quite a bit, so we're hopeful that we'll find the right, the right fit for that as well. But if somebody was looking immediately and really wanted to move forward right now, it would just be the option of a one-bedroom apartment. Any other questions?
Do we have an actual waitlist?
Yes, we do. So there's a pretty sizable waitlist, and that's another challenge that is on my desk to really comb through that and understand what that waitlist is really telling us. Because just, because you have a few hundred people on your waitlist, doesn't mean those people are all actively looking to move, or maybe they're not looking to move for five, ten, fifteen years. So that's one thing I'm, I'm looking at very closely and trying to engage with that waitlist. We'll be reviving events, marketing events, to find the opportunity to really meet with people face-to-face and find out what, what we really want to find out, who, who really wants to be moving in the next, you know, one to two to three years and find out, what does that number really look like? That's a great question. Anyone else? Okay. Well, I will stick around, please come up and introduce yourself and I would love to chance to meet you. Thanks.
Thank you. Of the four or five apartments we have, we have a total of three hundred and forty-one apartments and cottages, so we're really doing quite well as far as activity goes and all across all levels of care. Very, very pleased with that. Allison.
You're tall, Heather. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Allison Zach and I have the honor of serving as the Director of Philanthropy here. And as Florence said, February is Heart Month, but it is also the month when the Resident Council Religious Life Committee runs its Angel Fund campaign. So we're about halfway through the campaign and I want to thank those of you who have already participated. And for those of you who have not had a chance to support this campaign, I would encourage you to think about it. The Angel Fund is designed to support our team members who find themselves in a crisis. And as many of you know, throughout your life, sometimes life can be very hard. And so when our, our team members surface through their supervisors or through our chaplains, they are able to confidentially apply for assistance, financial assistance. All of that money is given to the vendors that would support whatever crisis they're going through. The money is not given directly to the team member, but it is really valued by our team. They know that the residents through the Angel Fund have their back and from a workforce development type of benefit, they don't, you don't get that if you work in a bank, you don't get that kind of support if you work in other institutions. So it's part of what makes you feel very special. So if you have questions, I see Nancy Miller is in the, in the room, and I know she'd be happy to answer any questions, but the need is real. Last year, twenty-three team members received about forty-nine thousand dollars. So we really appreciate the support that you give this campaign. March twenty-ninth, our office will be holding a estate planning workshop. This is important if maybe if you've moved to Virginia and you're not familiar with all of the estate laws, or if you're thinking it might be time to refresh your, your will and your estate plans, this is a good opportunity. All the details are in the informer, but know that that is coming up on March twenty-ninth. Also in March, we're going to celebrate another group of Cedarfield scholars. We've given out more than twenty-five scholarships since we started in twenty-one, and we'll have another group announced at the Resident Council meeting in March, so look forward to that. The secret garden, hopefully you all saw the beautiful article in the New Voices magazine, but the things are starting to layer in, as they say, we've got abandoned benches, we're adding birdhouses, a lot of the appliances and hardscape are coming in, and then we hope as soon as the weather continues to be seventy-five degrees, Beth and her team will be planting. And we will celebrate all of the donors and the wonderful gifts that were presented to, to renovate that garden. Sometime in April, we have a big grand opening party, so I look forward to telling you more information about that. It's budget time, so we are coming up with a list of priorities of ways that philanthropy can extend the budget. As you know, that's one of the benefits of philanthropy, when money is infused into the system, it extends the budget, but it also allows us to do programs faster. So know that probably in March, I hope I'll have some ideas of some things that have bubbled up as opportunities where philanthropy can, can support Cedarfield. Finally, I'm available whenever you are, so please do stop by my office if you'd like to talk about ways to get involved here at Cedarfield, either with your time and talents or if you have interest in making a gift. I'm happy also to attend area meetings, I'd be happy to talk with folks in smaller groups, answer any questions you have and share some of the work that we are doing here. So thank you again for all your gifts and have a great afternoon, I think I'm in it, right? Do you have a question for me?
You paid a really big check for the sound system in this room yet? Now you...
We need one though.
We need one. I'm the kind of guy, I like to walk around and talk, but what they've told me is I can't move outside the width of this podium for fear because the microphones don't work for a while. So that's one thing we're looking at, is the, the fellas on the podcast. Couple things we're looking at is the renovation of this room, and part of that is the, the sound system in this room, part of it's the air conditioning in this room, part of it is the stage, part of it is the curtains, part of it is the whole room. So we have a committee, we actually put together a group of residents working with team members to look at this room from a functionality standpoint and what things happen in this room and what do we need to do going forward to make it the most efficient room, the most useful room it can be. That's part of it. Another part we're looking at is also the town center, the lobby area out front. You may have heard over the past couple of years, we had a project in planning and in motion to redo that area, and there's been some discussion about some furniture that was already purchased, whether it was senior friendly or not, whether the white tile floors that were proposed were friendly or not. I'm happy to report, we met with that group this past Monday talking about town center, and we are definitely looking at replacing that white tile with something that's much more user-friendly. Also looking at just the whole design area out there, what, what's the best ways to use that space as well, as well as this space in here. So you'll be hearing more as we look through those projects. The good thing is, we have residents involved and through the help of Ann Williams, who was part of the, my president's cabinet and past presidents of the Resident Council, we worked together to put together a committee of a good cross-section of residents who understand what we're trying to do from a community aspect and not have any personal agendas involved. So I think we're going to wind up with some really great projects to the future to really benefit what we do on campus from a functional standpoint in this room as well as out in the front lobby area too. So look forward for more information surfacing on that over the next few weeks too. With that, as we work through that, they are wrapping up the construction over in healthcare, and when they're done there, they will jump right into working on the town center up front. So construction will not go away in the near future, but it's also going to be an improvement for the community going forward now and into the future as we plan for residents moving in next year, five years, ten years, and fifteen years down the road to make sure we are a sustainable organization, meeting the needs and requirements of those residents looking for a wonderful place to live, like you folks made the great choice to do as well. One last thing, there's some notice went out earlier this week talking about a, a program that is being changed. If you remember way back when, when Cedarfield first opened, I'm sure we started doing a grocery shuttle, and I think Florence talked about a little bit today, the shuttle to the grocery stores, to shopping, that kind of a deal, which would be take residents to go shopping. When the, when COVID hit, we looked at ways we could help residents still get groceries that they wanted, minimal impact on their life as well as just keeping everybody safe. And so the Instacart program was developed and implemented at that point in time. A great program, really good for the residents who needed groceries, that didn't have the ability to go out and go shopping. We are not limiting that program, we are changing that program to put it on the residents to actually run their own Instacart program. So that will be happening in the near future too. The, the idea behind that is if you are able to work your phone and put an order in, it'll be great because the distinct advantage would be those groceries will be delivered right to your door, you won't have to put upstairs to pick them up anymore. So that'll be a great advantage there as well. It'll also reduce a lot of time that our staff takes to drive to the store, pick up the groceries, bring them back, lug them downstairs, separate them, and then wait for you to come and pick them up. So it'll be a great advantage for our staff to get that couple hours a week back to actually have more opportunity for more medical trips, you know, just other regular trips in general, and take the load off of the staff having to plug all those groceries, groceries around too. So I know you may have heard that that program is being eliminated, it is not being eliminated, it's just being changed, we, we feel for the betterment of our staff, we feel for the betterment of the residents who need groceries that maybe don't want to go out this week to get them and get them directly to everybody to your apartment. Okay? With that, is there any other questions or comments, thoughts? Yes, Ann?
Would you like to mention the CARF survey and how well it went?
Sure. She had talked about the CARF survey we had last week. I forgot to bring that sheet, I'm trying to remember from memory. The CARF surveys were here Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. They were here virtually, which was pretty of a unique experience. All of our directors and team members met with them and residents met with them virtually as well. They, they reviewed over fifteen hundred standards when they're on campus to do this, and we had provided them a lot of information ahead of time that they could review. And then in the virtual meetings, they would ask questions and get input from us wherever we were on, on different parts of the survey. When they left on Friday, they did a exit survey, exit conference at two o'clock on Friday afternoon and reported, I believe it was five recommendations. Now, what recommendation is not bad, it just sense to me, they looked at what we do, they think you do a great job, but we could be better in certain areas. Three of those areas related to the financial, which is because we're part of the obligated group, is actually a pinnacle ratio that they looked at. So they're not directly, they're related to us, but more related to the corporate level as well. Another one was, as we evaluate our team members each year, we might, make sure we have goals for them. We need to look at our goals and make them more what they call the SMART goal, something that's measurable each year that they can be working towards. The last thing that they cited us on was made a recommendation for, we have a lot of contractors that come on campus. We need to make sure we are educating them on what our policies and procedures are as far as what they need to do when they're on campus, whether it's COVID vaccines, water park, all the kind of stuff that they, they need to be aware of when they're on campus here to make sure they're doing the right thing. On the plus side, there was a list about like this of things that are good, they, they recognize we have a very engaged board of directors, we have a very engaged resident council, we have team members that are very involved and are very happy, just a lot of good things that we talk about. So it's been very, very good to get the report back from them verbally. Within six to eight weeks, they will give us a written report talking about what the recommendations are and what, what strengths that they found about our community. So we're very, very pleased. I know the residents sat in on some of that review, I think Ann was there for the, the exit conference, and we all were very, very, very pleased with the outcome of it. Other questions? Yes?
Will we get to see the final written report?
Will you get to receive the final written report? That I don't know, but I'll find out. I'm not sure what protocol is, I'm releasing some of that kind of stuff. I would hope we can. If we can't release the report itself, we can release more information about what's in the report. Other questions? Do you feel well informed?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Have a great day, thanks for coming.